Who stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to participate in the forty decisions. Allow us to grow closer as a group and support the bonds of the community. Feel us with your grace as you make decisions that might affect the community and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greatest glory of years, and for the service of humanity, we ask these things in your name.
Amen.
You have had an opportunity to look over the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? If there are no changes, I appreciate a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda's approved. Next is a public hearing for fifty-three-eleven Community Transportation Program grant Kelly Walker, the director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
North Carolina Department of Public Transportation Division, Public Transportation Department, has released the grant applications for fiscal year 2019. Each requires the opportunity for public input as well as a public hearing. Applications for these projects must be submitted no later than November 3rd. NCDOT PTD has specified it is allowed that one combined public hearing can be held if so desired. CARTS is requesting approval to proceed with three grant applications. The first grant application is the fifty-three-eleven Community Transportation Program or CTP grant and is a formula-based allocation grant for public transportation projects in non-urbanized area. CARTS relies on this grant to assist with the administrative cost of operations in the rural areas. The second grant is for the consolidated capital application. Capital projects are to be included on a consolidated application, which does not specify which grant capital projects will be placed in. This is determined at the state level. The capital purchases planned for fiscal year 2019 is the replacement vehicles and computer equipment. The third grant for which CARTS has not previously applied is mobility management. The need for a mobility manager was identified in the recent transit development plan. We understand this is requesting to apply for funding for a position that does not exist. We are not asking for a commitment by the commissioners to create the position, but approval to move forward to attempt to obtain funding for the position should it be approved during fiscal year 2019 budget process. That application is a competitive one, and if approved, it would cover eighty percent from the federal, ten percent state match, ten percent local match. However, counties have been advised to be prepared to cover twenty percent match should the state not have funding available. With this funding, mobility manager would be able to serve both the rural and urban areas. For comparison purposes, if this position were funded using fifty-three oh seven small urban formula funding, the local match would be at least twenty percent based on eligibility to capitalize. Otherwise, the match would be fifty percent. And using fifty-three oh seven funding, the position would have to be one hundred percent urbanized. If we're able to fund this position with the mobility management grant, the fifty-three oh seven funding that would go towards this position would instead be available for other purposes. The application information for each of these grants has been available on the Craven County website, and the public hearing was publicized. We're requesting a combined public hearing for each of these three grant applications, and at the conclusion of the public hearing, we are requesting consideration and approval for each grant application individually.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're now in public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, for the CARTS fifty-three-eleventh Community Transportation Program grant application, we have one individual who has registered to speak this evening. Mr. Hal James.
I'm Hal James, and I live at three oh five Calico Drive in Craven County, and I'm spokesperson for the Coastal Carolina Taxpayers Association. The preparation for this consolidated transportation grant application must be a very complicated and difficult job, and my hats off to Mrs. Kelly, Mrs. Walker, I mean, for being capable of such a feat. As indicated in attachment one to tonight's agenda, I went to the Public Transportation Division's website and assessed the material needed to complete an application. One folder contained another folder and twenty-six different files of checklists, instructions, and forms to be filled out. The second folder had five more files, making the total of thirty-one files. I did not and will not try to assess each part of the application. I'm interested in an aspect of the application that I've spoken about several times before this board. That's the discrimination against a certain class of individuals. The U.S. Department of Justice lists the following race and national origin designations. The following employee and applicant groups are recorded to trace applicant flow and minority group representation. One is American Indian and Alaskan Native. The second one is Asian Pacific Islander. The third is Black, not of Hispanic origin. And the fourth is Hispanic, and the fifth is White, not of Hispanic origin. One of the thirty-one files I mentioned is in the application preparations informed on public hearing outreach, and here's how it reads. Public hearing outreach. Provide a detailed description of public hearing outreach efforts by the applicant to inform the public, especially minority women, elderly, disabled, limited English proficiency, and low-income individuals about the scheduled public hearing, and the opportunity to comment on the proposed Community Transportation Grant application. Outreach may include efforts such as distribution of information on vehicles at human services agencies, at local community events, at public events, local organizations, et cetera. Click on the gray box and begin typing the detailed description through the instructions. Apparently, the federal government's not concerned with treating all citizens equally and assuring that all citizens have equal opportunity to succeed. Here's some of more of the language used in describing contracting with the government or government employee for providing services to citizens. The Department of Transportation disadvantaged business enterprise. This program is a federally required program designed to ensure that firms owned and controlled by minorities, women, and other social and economically disadvantaged persons have the opportunity to grow and become self-sufficient. The U.S. DOT has established a single disadvantaged business enterprise goal encompassing both firms owned by women and minority groups. To be certified as a disadvantaged business enterprise, a firm must be a small business owned and controlled socially and economically disadvantaged individuals. Certifiers make the determination based upon site visits, personal interviews, reviews of licenses, stock ownership, equipment, bonding capacity, work completed, resume of the owners, and financial capability. I want to point out that the people being discriminated against in all of this is number five, white, non-Hispanic origin. In addition, any businesses that are prosperous, successful at what they do, and competent need not apply. Does that make any sense at all? It's like saying to my wife, "We need to make an addition to our house, let's go out and hire one of the worst construction companies we can find." By complying with these discrimination requirements, this Board of Commissioners is complicit in a very silly and inappropriate discrimination, and why? To obtain federal dollars, to be able to point to all the benefits that they are bringing to Craven County citizens in order to get reelected. We need public servants who will stand up to the ever-overreaching federal government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to the second grant hearing, CARTS consolidated capital grant application, we have nobody that signed up.
Okay, is anybody in the audience that would like to talk to the ...? No one wants to talk?
Mr. Chairman, with respect to the third component, the CARTS Mobility Management Grant Application, Hal James has identified himself as wanting to speak. If he can get up, there he goes. Okay.
Yeah, Hal James again, three oh five Calico Drive. This application is pretty short and sweet, and it basically says that because the federal government has money available to grow the county's business size again, that what we want to do is hire somebody to be a management, a control manager. Now, it doesn't define very well what a control manager does, except its duties seem to be to get more people to apply for more services and to use the services that are available. So, since it's federal government, money, what I think is eighty percent, ten and ten, that person would be hired at taxpayer expense primarily and once again by the federal government. And that's basically what's causing our country to be twenty trillion dollars in debt and keep adding to the debt, because this is repeated over and over in every county in the whole country. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, there are no further individuals that have expressed an interest in speaking this evening on this grant application hearing.
Okay, and there's no one in the audience that would like to speak, other than Mr. James? I have a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The Commissioners have any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Tice.
Kelly, your grant number three for the mobility manager. How long is this good? For a number of years? Normally, they'll provide you the money for the first three years, and then after that it becomes a responsibility to the owning unit. Is this an ongoing continuation, eighty-twenty max? Or we got a number of years that this goes away and then we own it?
There's no guarantee. If the application is approved, it's only guaranteed for that first year, and then after that we would have to reapply, assuming that the grant opportunity is made available the following year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions.
Commissioner Tice.
Kelly, explain what a mobility manager would actually do with CARTS and how it would function without one.
Okay. With the ... If there were to be any changes made based on the transit development plan, we would need additional staff to be able to perform the duties that will need to be done, or take over some of the duties that are being done by other staff now, so that they could be doing the other things. Mobility manager would be helping with if we set up changes to the fixed route and monitoring the statistics in relation to that. It would be other data-related type ... Let me see how exactly I worded it. Heavy on the task related to short-term management for implementing coordinated services, followed by travel training and outreach-type activities. A good part of it would be teaching individuals how to use the system. There continues to be feedback that a lot of individuals do not understand that CARTS is public transportation and available to everyone, and there are some individuals who, with travel training, would be able to possibly use the fixed route, who without that travel training would require the demand-response type service, which costs more money.
All right. The actual ... All right, this is coming down from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division, right?
Yes, sir.
And there are federal funds within this funding? Part of this is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is it all federal funding?
No, it is not all federal funding. Eighty percent of it is federal. This is a stream of funding that's given to the states to determine how to use it within their state. So this is not a grant that we could go and apply for directly. We can directly apply for the fifty-three oh seven, which is the small urban funds, and we are required to because we are direct recipient. For these funds, the applicants have to go through the Public Transportation Division and compete for the grant approvals.
Can you tell me the origin of the source of the fund? Does it come from the gas tax, or does it come from something else?
I don't know. I can find out.
I'd sure like to know that, for our voting on it.
Okay.
Now, I've got a feeling that it's coming from the gas tax, of which we pay, and not from general revenue sources.
Okay.
And most of DOT, state DOT funding that we get comes from the gas tax.
Okay.
And federal, too. But I just don't know if this ... How long would it take you to find it out?
I could start working on that tomorrow. We've got until November 3rd to submit the application, so if you delayed making a decision on this application, I could get that in plenty of time before the next Commissioners' meeting for you to have that information to determine your decisions.
Maybe the rest of the Board is comfortable without having that information, but I'm just curious. I mean, if it's coming from the gas tax, I don't have a problem with it coming from ...
I might actually raise some additional concerns.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
When Commissioner Tice is done.
Okay.
Kelly, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
So you say that this mobility manager position is going to be necessary if and when we have this transit plan change made?
Correct.
Okay. What is the status of that transit plan today?
No, no decision has been made in regards to whether or not there will be any changes, and what changes they might be if there were some.
So are we kind of putting the cart in front of the horse here a little bit, and that we've not decided to move forward with this transit plan? So why do we need the position to address the transit plan?
Because right now, we're not asking for the position itself, we're just asking for the funding should the position be created. Because if we move forward, it's kind of which, you know, the chicken or the egg, you know, kind of thing. So if we get to a position where the decision was made to move forward with some of those changes, and we ask for the position, then we're going to have to explain how we would pay for the position. And we only get this grant opportunity once a year, and come budget time, when those discussions would probably be happening, so I anticipate those discussions would be happening, there's no opportunity at that point to apply for funding.
My concern is that, like in most parts of government, once the position is made available, we're going to grab it and take it, and it's going to be there whether we need it or not.
I have checked with our representative at the Public Transportation Division in regards to if this position is not created, would there be a problem with ... And if the application was approved, would there be a problem with this approved application that we don't access the money to? And they said it would not. To move forward with making an application should the position be created.
Okay, well, then brings me to my next concern. If you say that we could move forward, that we wouldn't necessarily move forward with this, let's say we decide not to go forward with the transit plan. The application itself, though, says that the position would serve Craven, Jones, Pamlico Counties with rural and urban areas. Mobility manager would interact with general public with an emphasis on elderly and disabled for travel training activities. Mobility manager would also work with agencies such as Interfaith Refugee for travel training activities to acclimate refugees to the public transit system.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we've already got some components of a public transit system in place, do we not?
Yes, sir.
Okay, why would the need not be there for the existing public transit system?
There is a need now, and we're trying to cover it as best as we can, and we have reestablished a working relationship with Interfaith in regards to trying to acclimate.
So they have taken a role in reaching out to you directly in support of their program?
Yes, in teaching them how to use our system.
Have there been any other organizations that have actively lobbied your organization in order to get this done?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for ... I can't remember. Kelly, did the whole Board get a copy of the transit plan?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Samson.
I'd like to say that the problem we're having with people to obtain transportation, especially people who don't have cars, no way to get to a ... I think this is a pretty good effort, to try to reach all the people, make sure people that want transportation for a good reason, that they would be able to obtain it. So I'm ready, I'm willing to wait until we get some more information, but it sounds good to me.
All right. The consensus seems to be ... Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Are we going, are we waiting for grant three? Are we waiting for all, one, two, and three?
Let me ask the county manager.
You can do it either way. If you're comfortable with one and two, you can go ahead and approve those tonight, we submit them, and we can wait until three to come back.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to that effect of approving the first two applications.
I second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear what she said. I didn't hear the rest of the proposal.
My motion was to go ahead and approve the application for the first two grants, and then the third grant, we would get additional information at the next board meeting. We decided that time we have until November 2nd.
All right. Okay.
Everybody agrees.
Thank you. Oh, you got it, you got it, yeah.
On the first two. Yes, we need to vote on the first two, please.
Oh, we had a motion.
Was that the ...
Second. I didn't say that all in favor say aye.
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds. Reed Whitezol.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My employer, Mr. Holland, was up here a couple of weeks ago for what we thought would be the first public hearing for this, and he gave me some background, so I'll try to answer some questions that I know the Board has related to this already. It has to be publicly advertised. We tried to do it on the public website because of the urgency of it and the speed of it, but we were advised that we have to have two public hearings for this funding. The first tonight, the second will be on the 16th in the morning, and I will also attend that public hearing. To give you a little background, Hurricane Matthew, I know you're all familiar with it. Some of you were at a meeting where I addressed people in Vanceboro, the mayor, citizens, after a very comprehensive outreach by the county staff, who should be commended because they basically undertook it into their regular work schedule to do the outreach for Hurricane Matthew in good faith. And based on the state's instructions, Department of Public Safety Division of Emergency Management's instructions, at several public hearings, some of which Mr. Baumgarten attended, some of which I attended, we were advised in as early as December of last year that if we did our homework and got everything on the table in Raleigh, that we would be considered for hazard mitigation grant assistance, which you all are familiar with, following Hurricanes Fran and Floyd, which is disaster-specific. So the state requested that information. We took photographs, we put together site inventory, sent them out to the homeowners that we knew about. We actually also sent some information out to people on our repetitive loss list, which we keep every year for our annual funding for elevation. And we also sent, fortunately, a supplementary assistance form, which is based on your old scattered site, CDBG housing. And we received over thirty of those from the community, in addition to about fifty requests for elevation, buyout, or reconstruction. The county went through all those and did onsite visits, determined the extent of flooding as best we could, whether in fact, in fact, there was flooding or not. And we submitted eighteen reconstruction units for three-point-one million dollars, and eleven elevation units for one-point-six million dollars, which is still in Raleigh. And we were advised several months ago, I think in June, June, that the county would not receive any HMGP assistance, which obviously was very disappointing, given the level of work that the county staff had performed, my firm had performed, and based on Craven County's historic experience with flood recovery and mitigation, which is extensive and goes back to Hurricane Fran. Nonetheless, because of the shortage of funds, it was decided to fund the four highly impacted counties of Edgecombe, Robison, Lenore, and Cumberland. And several of our clients received small allocations, the biggest one being Pender County. It was very similar to Vanceboro. There's been ... Those of you familiar with the Northeast Cape Fear River know that those houses there flood all the time, north of Wilmington. And so they were given some consideration. Pamlico County had no eligible houses that we could determine. Cofer County submitted a very similar application, and also has extensive experience in this. They received no funding under HMGP. City of Washington received no funding under HMGP. So that's the history of your program. Right now, you have people making repairs to their housing. Obviously, some people have moved back in, some people have not moved back in. We can't keep track of all that, but we do know that people are still in need from that storm past October. We were told through various outlets that there would be another chance for funding through the new budget, and that, those of you, all of you familiar with Washington, know what's going on up there. And given the fact that we've now had Hurricane Harvey, Irma, and the one in Puerto Rico, personally, I consider it very doubtful that anybody in North Carolina is going to see another dime out of Hurricane Matthew. So with all that background, you do have a good opportunity here, perhaps the only one that you have. The Community Development Block Grant Program does disaster recovery initiatives after every disaster, and there are thirty-two million dollars available for the forty-six other counties in the disaster declaration, not including the four counties I just spoke, which received approximately three-quarters of the allocation. So I think it was one-hundred-and-eighty million, something like that, and on, so we're down to thirty-two. I'm familiar with a number of the counties in the disaster declaration, and I believe that Craven has a very competitive opportunity here. First of all, the county's done its homework. You have a list of families with needs, documented needs. Number two, those people, in excess of thirty of them, submitted applications for supplementary assistance indicating, in their belief, and by circling in income, they were low and moderate income, which is a qualifier for this program. The program is very similar to the scattered site, CDBG program. Every beneficiary has to be low and moderate income. There's no mix. So we have those applications in hand, over thirty of them. Staff is now sorting through them, so we can come to you, hopefully, if we get the money, and come up with a ranking system, which you all are familiar with on your previous block grant programs, who will get the money first. At this point, we are preparing, my firm is preparing an application in good faith. It's due October 20th. There'll be another public hearing, and what we are recommending is that because we have this database of people who are deemed eligible for reconstruction and/or elevation, that we allocate the funds specifically for rehab and elevation and reconstruction, if it's perhaps a modular home, a mobile home that is simply too damaged to cost-effectively rehab and elevate. I had talked to Don about the flood plain ordinance problem, which is, we make more than fifty percent improvement to one of these houses compared to tax value. Then we have to comply with the flood damage prevention ordinance. That means we're going to have to elevate, and there's ways of getting around that by saying, "Well, for this program, we're going to do replacement value." Don and I have discussed that. He's discussed it with a building inspector, and we don't feel it's good to deviate from that standard. So what we will try to do is get away from a totally engineered foundation, which adds expense, both from service delivery and construction, and try to build the elevation into the rehab according to building code. We'll just, we'll hire an engineer and do one generic design like we used to do twenty-five years ago, and try to keep the cost down, so that we are getting these people up at least to your ... your free board requirement. We may come back to you and ask you to rescind the free board requirements specifically for this program, so that the only thing at risk in the house is perhaps the ductwork or the insulation, and it is possible to, we talked about this the other day, about retrofitting the HVAC system so it's in the roof and not subject to flood damage. That would be a lot easier than elevation. One of the commissioners, Mr. Holland, told me, I'm not sure which one, might have been Commissioner Jones, had a question about reimbursement for expenses people have already made. And we understand that after an event like this, it is a financial burden on everybody. And if your insurance settlement doesn't cover everything, you're going to go out of pocket. We discussed that at length. We are, as of this date, I am unsure whether that is actually an eligible activity in this program. They have not clarified it. I am prepared to ask them whether it is, but I would, as your consultant of long standing and knowing the needs, I would recommend we stick to the units that we've got in hand. If people went through the system and were assured they'd get assistance, they have not yet received assistance. And speaking for county staff and myself, I think the best recourse here is to deal with rehab and reconstruction of the houses we have where people are in need, you know, have these needs. I'll have a budget for you at the second public hearing, and probably the rudiments of a rating system for you, probably will be somewhat income-based, perhaps veterans in the household, disabled people in the household, elderly people in the household, something you all are familiar with, how cost-effective the rehabilitation is to tax value, and try to build some, you know, build a rating system over time based on that. Just in closing, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but everything I know about this, and I've been doing it since 1996, tells me that we're kind of stuck out here in North Carolina with all this other stuff going on, and this is all we're going to get. So let's make the most of it.
Okay. Before we go into public hearing, any questions? There are no questions? The motion go into public hearing?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now in public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we have one person that's signed up, Mr. Hal James.
Hal James, live at 305 Calico Drive in Craven County. I don't really want to speak against this Community Development Block Grant. I think there are some people that need help there. But I would like to call your attention to the fact that 32 and a half million dollars, again, of federal funds available. And we have, we heard the man say there that the housing floods in all the areas around Wilmington and different places. We've got FEMA involved in helping them. Somewhere along the line, this federal largess needs to be reconsidered and thought out in such a way that we don't just continue to add to the national debt, $20 trillion of national debt. This is just a part and parcel of the fact that half the people in the nation seem to be paying the other half's way. We've got to figure out a different way.
Are there anyone from, anybody else?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Make a motion, go ahead.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now out of public hearing. Next is petition of citizens.
Mr. Chairman, we have nine people that have signed up for this evening. B Mayo is the first individual.
Do you have to give us your name and address, please?
My name is Frances B Mayo. Most people call me B or in some cases, Miss B. I live at 1405 Phillips Avenue in New Bern, North Carolina. I have been working for the passage of the Equal Rights Amendment in North Carolina since the 1970s. One of my first dates with my husband, Max Fries, was at an ERA rally in Greenville. My mother was a teacher, and in her last year at Choon College, she tutored a young man to help meet the requirements to graduate. After a year of teaching at a school in northeastern North Carolina for a year, she was informed that the principal the next year would be the young man she had tutored who barely graduated. She resigned her position and found a teaching job in Wayne County, where she met and married my father. This sounds so far in the past, but jobs, equal pay, and opportunity continue to be denied to women. The justifications for failure to pass the Equal Rights Amendment are the same as those used for denying rights to other groups of individuals. I'm 71 years old, and I wonder if I will live to see women in North Carolina be included in the Constitution. I hope so. The request tonight is for support of a resolution showing support in North Carolina, for North Carolina to join other states in ratifying the ERA. Let's not be the cow's tail. It is time to do the right and moral thing for all women, your wives, your daughters, and your granddaughters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Friend.
So I've got to move this up a little. Richard Friend, 3507 Taylor Street, New Bern. In 1923, the Equal Rights Amendment was first introduced into Congress, and it was reintroduced into each session until it was passed with the required two-thirds majority in 1972. I was 22 years old then. In the succeeding years, it has been ratified by 36 of the 38 required states. Unfortunately, North Carolina is not one of them. The opportunity still exists, and your support for this amendment will improve its chances of receiving approval from the state legislature. It would be an unfortunate note in history if North Carolina was one of the states not to support this amendment. There's numerous reasons why passage of this amendment is still necessary. In 2001, Pew Research did a survey, they surveyed the population of a section of the United States, and approximately 75% of the people thought that equal rights was already guaranteed in the Constitution. It's not. The only right in the Constitution that's guaranteed from both sexes is the right to vote. Women in the Constitution, there's just a blank space there. I'm a retired attorney. I've seen a lot of things in court. One of the things I saw when I was preparing for this, I had to think about what I was going to say, there's an act, the Violence Against Women Act. That act is, prevents women's cases from being brought in federal court. So a woman can't sue her assault, her assaultor in federal court. It's a nice act, but it discriminates against her. Women are faulted, attorneys fault women for being intoxicated, for being promiscuous. This amendment would help eradicate those defenses. If this amendment were passed, a defendant would not be able to claim that in court. There's no excuse for rape, no woman is ever asking for it. And the fact that we allow those defenses now is sad. Third, equal means equal. An amendment would guarantee women's rights by the government with no room for debate. Courts have justified firing women because they were pregnant. They've justified unequal pay for equal work. If the ERA was put in the Constitution, those situations would never happen. They just wouldn't be allowed in court. Fourth, a legal remedy for sex discrimination would make things much clearer in court. In practice, if this amendment were passed, the amendment would classify sex under the same scrutiny that the Constitution now gives race. So the, and that's fairly simple, when you look at it in court, to look at race discrimination cases, you'd look at things the same way with a sex discrimination case if this were passed. As a former attorney, I've seen these problems arise, and would ask that you publicly adopt the position that the passage of the ERA by North Carolina would be a positive action for all of its citizens. I believe you've previously been presented with a petition in this matter, and I ask that you place it on your formal agenda and make your position known to the public. There was a famous Speaker of the House, Tip O'Neill, who used to have a saying. He said, "All politics is low..."
Thank you. Susan Long. Susan Long.
Good evening. Susan Long, 1990, Acorn Drive, New Bern, North Carolina. Once again, we are here to ask for the adoption of a resolution on the Equal Rights Amendment. It seems to be a prevailing opinion that the 14th Amendment has taken care of equal rights. Well, if this were the late 1800s, and if we were slaves, you would be correct. But we are not living in the 1800s, and there is no longer slavery. The intent of the law for the 14th Amendment was to address citizenship, rights, and equal protection of the law, and was proposed in response to issues related to former slaves following the American Civil War. So if you think the 14th Amendment covers women, then why did we have to have the 19th Amendment? The only right that the Constitution specifically affirms to be equal for women and men is the right to vote, the 19th Amendment. Chief Justice Scalia believed the 14th Amendment does not apply to discrimination against women because the measure was not intended in 1868. It cannot be assumed that with this death, this bit of judicial logic will find no followers. According to a Think Progressive article written at the time of Justice Scalia's remarks, he was not alone on the Supreme Court in thinking that the Constitution provides no guarantee of equal rights for women. If the chief justice can say he does not think women have equal rights under the Constitution, then it is time we pass the Equal Rights Amendment, so there can be no doubt about a woman's place in our society. North Carolina has an opportunity to be a leader in this endeavor, and our county commissioners have an opportunity to show support. Thank you.
Helen Robinson.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Helen Robinson. I live at 1906 Cayenne Court in New Bern. Since October is Domestic Abuse Awareness Month, I want to share some thoughts with you tonight about the connection between the ERA and domestic violence. I am not here tonight on my own behalf. I've been married for 46 years, and I'm pleased to say that I feel very safe with my husband, and I think that will continue. I am, however, concerned for my five-year-old granddaughter, Lucy, and for all the other girls and women who may be at risk. As you may know, one in every four females in the United States will at some point in time experience domestic violence, and one in every five females in the United States will experience sexual assault. So for some of you, that will mean a sister, a daughter, or granddaughter. I will say that we're also concerned for men who were victims of domestic abuse, but we need to realize that studies show that this occurs less often and that injuries are much less severe. Back in the late 1970s, I managed one of the very first domestic violence programs in southeastern North Carolina. I will never forget answering a crisis call from a woman one night and meeting her on the edge of a tobacco field way after midnight. She was pregnant. She had run away from her trailer, escaping her boyfriend who had pistol-whipped her across her belly, her pregnant belly. I was so relieved he did not follow her, and I was glad that we were able to give her temporary shelter in a safe place. Sometimes I wonder what happened to that woman, though I do now understand that the 14th Amendment would not have protected her. Today, not so many women have to run for their lives across tobacco fields, might be soybean fields instead, and there are more resources and legal protections available to those who are in danger. We do have shelters available in many places, plus legal measures called protection or restraining orders that sometimes offer police support. Attorneys concerned for the safety of women argue, however, that the 14th Amendment and Title VII of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and some of the Violence Against Women Acts that have been passed have gone as far as they can to produce equality for both sexes. One important case that I want to mention denied legal recourse for domestic violence, and this was Castle Rock versus Gonzalez in 2005. Castle Rock versus Gonzalez. You might want to look it up. The Supreme Court ruled that, under existing laws, a police department or town could not be sued for failing to enforce a restraining order. In this famous case, the Supreme Court ruled seven to two that the 14th Amendment does not allow the Constitution to compel law enforcement to protect women against domestic violence. And again, Justice Scalia was the person writing that opinion. A stronger legal format is needed to protect women from domestic violence. The ERA could provide a sturdy framework to better guarantee women's protection. Let's join Texas and Tennessee, folks. Let's let Craven County not be the cow's tail.
Good evening, gentlemen. This will be short and sweet. My name is Barbara Harrison, 85 Shoreline Drive in Riverbend. I'm just going to ask you if you would please do some research regarding the need for the ERA instead of just dismissing it out of hand, so that we may forward your support for a resolution to the North Carolina legislation. It's very important to half the population of North Carolina and of the United States, and we just hope that you make the correct decision and give us some support. We appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tyker Gonzalez.
Would you hand them to the clerk?
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. I'm Tyker Gonzalez, 125 Turkey Quarter Creek Road, Cove City, North Carolina, 28523. A dear late friend of mine, Johnny Weatherington, always used to say, "If you don't have the time to do something right the first time, how will you find the time to correct it later?" Commissioners, it was a year ago tonight when I began this effort to stop cruelty in Craven County, and since then, you have seen hundreds of faces in support of this and received just as many emails and phone calls. It's been a struggle for us to get this board to finally enact an ordinance that aims to stop animal cruelty, which included tethering. At the work session in August, you told Terry Morris and myself that any corrections that needed to be made would be done in the time period prior to the ordinance going into effect. So Mr. Morris and I sat down together and worked on changes that needed to be made. We were both in full and 100% agreement on the changes that have been presented to you. Yet we have now been told that this board wants to wait until it's put into force before making changes. Some of these changes are life and death, like the provision of constant water instead of twice a day, which I honestly think that was an error in typing. The other is to make certain shade is provided in addition to any doghouse. The other lifesaving change is to make certain a female in heat is in a secure enclosure. This keeps dogs from dying at our shelter from unwanted births. I've been informed that some of the board is, quote, "tired of dealing with this issue," yet the board members are not the one dealing with it day in and day out. We are. So we need these changes in there before January 1st, please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Reeve Griffin.
God bless you. Baseball North Carolina, Reeve Griffin. How little we are doing with the knowledge we have. They've taken old glory in the natural anthem and replaced it with bending knees and blind eyes, when they should be bending their hearts and looking up. They have taken the Ten Commandments out of school and placed them with policemen in the hallway. They've taken the Sabbath and replaced it with beer in the streets. America today is drugged up, shot up, and been told to shut up. I say today, as Christians, we better be praying and looking up, praying for America. American communities are besieged by a highly dangerous addictive drug. Its users have become agitated, violent, harming themselves and family members. Its credibility is toxic and even lethal at high doses. Many people are abusing it and unable to quit. It's responsible for nearly 90,000 deaths each year, and I'm talking about alcohol. Despite the focus on illegal drugs of abuse such as cocaine and opioids, alcohol remains the number-one drug in the U.S. Nearly 17 million adults are dependent on alcohol. Alcohol is the number-one drug chose by teenagers. Alcohol is the number-one problem in the U.S. Americans spend $197 million each day. A person is killed in an alcohol-related car accident every 30 minutes. In America, on the average, nearly 12,000 people die every year in DUI-related accidents. Alcohol kills more teenagers than all other drugs combined. It is a factor in the causes of death among 15- to 24-year-old accidents, homicide, and suicide. Youth who drinks are 7.5 times more likely to use other drugs and 50 times more likely to use cocaine than young people who never drank. Alcohol misuse costs the United States of America $249 billion each year. We've had these opioid meetings, and you had all these, and they're great, but I want you to listen to statistics. 88,000 people have died in America of alcohol in 2016. 2016, there was only 64,000 to 65,000 who died of drug overdose. So what is that saying? We have a problem here in Craven County, and it's saying, "You guys, the federal government, everybody supports alcohol. You get tax revenue. You actually make it ready, accessible for people to go out and get it and drink it." There was an article in the paper a while back about one city or what raised the taxes on alcohol, and it cut the deaths by 20%. So where are you today? What are we looking at? Well, we've had these big opioid meetings and all these things, but we don't look at alcohol as a base-related thing. And I know for a fact myself, I've been in NA, and I've been AA, and I've worked, and most people have somewhere to start, and it's mostly with alcohol. You won't see a person hardly walk into a room that's never done drugs, taking needles and sticking them to his arm. There's going to be something related to that to get it started. We need to do something, go back to something like a blue law. Cut out this Sunday drinking. Cut out these things that are happening, and that will cut some of this opioid and addiction situation going on. But we're not getting to the root of the problem. We're just pacifying it. Yes, we're having these big meetings, and we're doing things, but what is happening? Have we saved one soul? Have we changed one from drinking? They've changed all the drug laws and different things, and they're still overdosing. So why don't we look, go to a root problem and do away with some way, do away with the Sunday drinking? They even talked about alcohol, and college students are getting on binge drinking, and that is worse than anything else. From binge drinking, they graduate to marijuana, they graduate to stronger drugs, and they graduate to something powerful. In other words, alcohol is still the main number one drug. And you promote it. You sell it. You've got ABC stores. The federal government is really putting it out there so you can get it. Say it. You're sponsoring it. You're taking the good news, and you're using it, and you're trying.
Reiner James.
Good evening. I am Reiner James. I live at 305 Calico Drive. I'm a taxpayer, and I'm frustrated. Our government is bloated. We were hearing tonight about, well, let me back up. Every time I visit you all, I see government grow, contributing to that bloat. We're some $20 trillion in debt. There's no way we can pay that off in our lifetime. So what are we doing? We are burdening children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren. How many generations do you think we're burdening with tax, with debt? Think that we're not going to pay it back? That's immoral. We've got no business doing that. We are spending money on things that government shouldn't spend money on. We're spending too much money. We're not setting priorities. I so badly want a government at every level that is in the spirit of the Declaration of Independence, adheres to the Constitution of these United States, adheres to the North Carolina Constitution, buys off on the notion that the government is the government best that governs least and stays out of the affairs of individual people, so that it does only that that is minimum for public safety, stays out of business, allows free enterprise to work, doesn't pick winners and losers. This county, this board, is a microcosm of what has gotten our whole country in a mess. It's distressing, and I'm frustrated, and I'd surely like to see you gentlemen mend your ways. Good evening.
Hal James.
Hal James. I also live at 305 Calico Drive. Reiner said that government had gotten immoral. I'm going to give you an example of it. You have a girlfriend with two children. You want to get married. Don't marry her. Always use your mom's address to get your mail. The guy buys a house. The guy rents out a house to his girlfriend with two kids. Section 8 will pay $900 a month for a three-bedroom home. Girlfriend signs up for Obamacare so guy doesn't have to pay for family insurance. Girlfriend gets to go to college for free, being a single mother. Girlfriend gets $600 a month for food stamps. Girlfriend gets a free cellphone. Girlfriend gets free utilities. Guy leaves the home but continues to use mom's address for his mail. Girlfriend claims one kind of, claims one kid, and the guy claims the other kid on their tax forms. Now, both get to claim head of household at $1,800 credit. Girlfriend gets a $1,800 a month disability for having a bad back and never having to work again. This plan is perfectly legal and is being executed now by millions of people. A married couple with a stay-at-home mom yields $0. An unmarried couple with a stay-at-home mom gets $21,600 disability, $10,800 free housing, $6,000 free Obamacare, $6,000 free feed, $2,800 free utilities, $6,000 Pell Grant money to spend, $12,000 a year in college tuition, food from Pell Grant, plus $8,800 tax benefit for being a single mother, $75,000 a year in benefits, and they pay for it. And these people vote for politicians who keep the benefits coming. They have a view of how the country is $20 trillion in debt, and half the population is letting the other half pay their way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our list of those interested in speaking publicly this evening.
Thank you for everybody that spoke. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we go into consent agenda, I'd just like to say that the right amendment affects everyone about the equal rights now. I have four daughters, and I sure want them to be protected. I had so much time that I was discriminated against. I knew when I first went to Chair Point, I couldn't even use the red, the black restroom. I had to go in the black restroom. I know what equal rights mean, and I feel strongly that it's more than fair to pass a resolution that these women, all women, would have the equal right just as the men do. And so I'm going to put this in a formal motion. I motion that we have a resolution to pass, to pass that these women would have the same rights, and all, everybody in America as a citizen would have the same rights as anyone else, especially these women, because they don't have it.
Commissioner Sampson, if you would hold off on that, because the reason I would ask you to hold off is that I am tonight during my comments, passing a, asking three commissioners to form a committee. There is some wording in the resolution. In addition to that, there was a remark made about military, not in the resolution, but at one of the speakers, that was not correct. In addition to that, someone said that, when they spoke, that there were other counties or all the counties are signing a petition. So far, we have reached out to other counties, and no one has wired us back that they are considering a resolution. So what I would like to do is appoint three members of this board to look into this.
I would let Mr. Morton stand. I read the resolution.
Okay. Do we have a second on the motion?
Whether they want a second or not.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes.
We, as a board, approved the agenda for this evening. There was no motion by any member to amend the agenda, to consider this resolution or any other resolution outside the course of business that had been provided to us. So I would ask the chairman respectfully to determine that this motion by Commissioner Sampson is, at this point in time, out of order.
I consider these laws that is governing our citizens is out of order, since the women don't have the equal rights just as the men do. I don't know how many of you have daughters and have a wife. I have a wife, and she don't have her equal rights, and I feel strong. If you don't want, if nobody don't want a second, I'm used to it. Let's go on with the meeting, or you can vote on it, or do what you want to do with it. It's on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't mind a second, but we need to wait and find out, do some more research on it, and come back on this, Mr. Johnny.
We've been researching it how many years? You didn't know the women didn't have equal rights? Why you, why you one more time? Just vote it down if you don't want. You're mad?
The vice chairman has brought up that this is, was not, the agenda was approved, and now it's, a motion is being made, and therefore, we should not accept this.
Well, you can approach this one of two ways, and at this point, there isn't clear to be a second being offered.
Well, I'm going to second.
Well, again, then, based on the vice chairman's concerns, what you pointed out, you could, would be out of order if the agenda was not amended. However, that would be subject to another motion to overrule the board's decision, so we can make that. Wouldn't object there, wouldn't vote on that.
Well, I believe the vice chairman made that motion.
Well, you.
He made a call.
It's your rule.
At this point being that wasn't on the agenda, and the fact that I was going to appoint a committee to look at the wording of the resolution and also to check on these other counties, because a statement was made that other counties were putting this resolution forward, and that has not, so far, come to light, as far as I know. We haven't heard back from any of the counties that we contacted. So that's why I will point a three-man committee from this board to look into those two factors.
Mr. Chairman, I respect for the knowledge you have, but all this time that you're here to talk about this amendment, it's been, I know, I know we had a month and a half, might be longer than that, and we just don't see what we will do about it. And I haven't heard nothing about you appointing a committee or to look in the matter, but I, I still, you can groom out all of what you want, but I'm still thinking about the motion that I made.
Chairman, I believe we have a motion on four. And I'm of the opinion that the motion is valid. Now, maybe I've misinterpreted something about our bylaws, but I thought a motion by anybody on this board could be in order at any time. Am I wrong?
That's my point. The chairman, if the chairman rules out of order, the board can vote to overrule his decision and reconsider.
How is it out, how is it out of order?
That it's not on the agenda.
We need to get some clarity on that, then, because I'm of the opinion that a commissioner can make a motion on something that's not on the agenda. I would like a formal.
Mr. Chairman, I would not disagree with Commissioner Tyson if this motion were made during the time in which commissioners were able to make their statements, and that has been clearly the process of this board and others, that if a member of this board wants to offer a motion, they generally do so under the terms, under the times at which their statement is being made, if it's an issue that's off the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say I made another motion in our last meeting, and it wasn't on the agenda, and I could not get a second. And I didn't have all this carried on about why they don't want to vote on it.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I'm correct in this, and Mr. Sampson, you made that motion during your time when we were making our statements. And it's my belief that that is the appropriate time to do these things, is when we have commissioner's statements, not in the middle of the agenda when we're trying to conduct our business here this evening.
And Commissioner Sampson, just to be fair to you, I have not mentioned having a committee appointed to any of the commissioners at this point, except the three that I asked to be on this committee. And that is the reason you didn't know about it, because I, when I came in tonight, I asked these three individuals, I wanted to make sure I had three members that would approve being on a committee.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak on the matter?
Yes.
The chairman did ask me when I came in tonight, to tonight's meeting, if I would serve on this committee, and I said I would. And I think that precedent, we as a board of commissioners have never, since I've been sitting on this board in seven years, considered a resolution without it going into some type of committee investigation by the county manager. Now, yes, these individuals have come before this board and presented facts to us, and, but it has not been discussed, because we cannot discuss it as a board. It wouldn't be legal to, unless we do it in an open meeting. It has not been directed to the county manager to give further information on it. And so I would, I would support 100% the recommendation of the chairman to take this to committee and allow the committee to sit down and to look at it, as we would do with any other resolution, and come back with what we find and recommendations from the county manager, and take a formal vote at that time. But if we vote on it tonight, this resolution that's being presented, we're setting a precedent of something that we've never done as a board of commissioners before, and I couldn't support passage of this resolution tonight because of that. I think that we have to stick by what we, our rules as a, as a board of commissioners, and I think that's been one of our consensus.
Mr. Chairman, I, if I, I believe I'm correct in this and Mr. Sampson, you made that motion during your time when we were making our statements. And it's, it's my belief that that is the appropriate time to do these things is when we have commissioner's statements, not in the middle of the agenda when we're trying to conduct our business here this evening.
And Commissioner Sampson, just to be fair to you, I have not mentioned having a committee appointed to any of the commissioners at this point except the three that I asked to be on this committee. And that is the reason you didn't know about it because I, when I came in tonight, I asked these three individuals, I wanted to make sure I had three members that would approve being on a committee.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak on the matter?
Yes.
The chairman did ask me when I came in tonight, to tonight's meeting, if I would serve on this committee and I, I said I would. And I think that precedent, we as a board of commissioners have never, since I've been sitting on this board in seven years, considered a resolution without it going into some type of committee investigation by the county manager. Now, yes, these individuals have come before this board and presented facts to us and, but it has not been discussed because we cannot discuss it as a board. It wouldn't be legal to unless we do it in an open meeting. It has not been directed to the county manager to give further information on it. And so I would, I would support 100% the recommendation of the chairman to take this to committee and allow the committee to sit down and to look at it as we would do with any other resolution and, and come back with what we find and recommendations from the county manager and take a formal vote at that time. But if we vote on it tonight, this resolution that's being presented, we're setting a precedent of something that we've never done as a board of commissioners before and I couldn't support passage of this resolution tonight because of that. I think that we have to stick by what we, our rules as a, as a board of commissioners and I think that's been one of our consensus that we may not be in writing on paper, but it's been our consensus as a board that we would agree to do that and carry it to committee. And, and I think that's what we need to do tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Sampson.
Do we have a valid motion on the floor?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I move that we amend the motion.
Hold on a minute.
Rule nine. Did what?
It's called rule nine.
What?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Tyson, you moved amend the motion, I'm not sure how you want to raise.
Hold on just a minute, I'm trying to read what Commissioner lines. County attorney saying we've got a valid motion. Do we, or do we not?
Rule 9D provides that board made by majority vote add an item that's not on the agenda. Now, we have adopted the agenda and I realize that potentially correct, sometimes things have come up, the board has taken action, but without an objection on those times. So if someone has objected, then we have to follow the rules that we have in place. So you do have a rule that says it should not be added to the agenda if there's objection or, excuse me, unless it's not a majority vote. Normally don't object, so we vote and that majority vote. But since there may or may not be an objection to the board, I'm not sure, but the chairman ruled out order. So my opinion, the motion has been ruled out of order. Were the boards, instead of this, though, substantive add of a major name to make a motion to overrule the decision of the chair. Vote on that and if the chair is overruled, then you can move Mr. Sampson's substantive motion.
Okay, no, I'm not gonna make that motion. I just, I thought I'd understood before that you could, any, any member of this board could make a motion, whether it's on the agenda or not.
Again, the rules say that we will not add the agenda unless there's a majority vote. Now, I think Commissioner Jones kind of probably characterized it best, you know, we kind of have, sort of being consensus or what have you, we normally allow those things to happen because no one's objected, but despite of an objection, a ruling is granted.
Okay, good. All right, so it's, at this point, at the commissioner's comments, I will form a committee and I will give the names out at that time of the people who'll be on that committee. Thank you. All right, approval of the minutes on the consent agenda, tax releases and a roll call vote. I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second?
Second.
Roll call both, please.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, I believe the county manager's got something to say.
I was just gonna comment on the, there was a special note from Mr. Antry in your package on the consent agenda explanation page. There's a unusual release in this package for $12,996. It's to the City of New Bern Housing Authority. This is due to a lease they have with a company called Preservation Management, which provides for those recycling fees to be billed to the leasehold owner of dwelling units. So we're gonna refund to the City of New Bern Housing Authority and bill to Preservation Management. So it's a net zero, it's just getting it to the right place.
Okay, yeah. That was covered on the tax release, but thank you for explaining it.
This is of so large.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Next on the agenda, Department of Matters Solid Waste, Rusty Cotton. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good evening. On, excuse me, on September 25th, 2017, Craven County was informed by representatives from both Republic Services of North Carolina and Waste Industries that Republic Services had to, has agreed to sell certain assets, including our convenient center hauling and solid waste franchise agreement to Waste Industries. This sale is effect, effective October 2nd, 2017. Both companies have prepared and executed a sign, assignment documents for both agreements and these documents have been reviewed and approved by the county attorney. To finalize the assignment of these contracts, Craven County must sign off on the transaction. For your reference, we're in the first year of a solid waste franchise agreement, first year of a five-year contract for the solid waste franchise agreement with the option for a five-year renewal upon mutual consent of both parties. We're in the second year of a convenience centers hauling agreement on a five-year contract with the option for a three-year renewal and a, those are the two contracts we're referring to tonight. There's also a third contract, a recyclable materials collection exclusive franchise agreement or a curbside recycle agreement, which Waste Industries currently has. We're in the second year of a three-year renewal on that. We asked the board to approve the assignment of the convenience site, center hauling contract and the solid waste franchise agreement from Republic Services of North Carolina LLC to Waste Industries LLC. Representatives from both companies are present at this meeting to answer any questions if you may have them.
Okay, so I have a motion?
Motion to support the transfer.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair.
All right.
I would like to hear from the representative or representatives of Waste Management. Anyone here? How are you doing?
Good evening, I'm Norma Yanez. I think some of you might know me, I work for Waste Industries, been within 27 years in Newport, North Carolina. Of course, currently we do your recycle contract. As of tonight at midnight, we're gonna be purchasing only this one branch of Republic here in New Bern. The branch is gonna stay there, it's gonna stay open, the same, most of the same employees will still be there. Got Rob McPlendon, who's currently the general manager there, he's gonna still be the general manager there. Really very little change will go on except for you'll see our name on the trucks and the containers and you'll probably be seeing some new trucks.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would like both of these people to give us a commitment as much as they can, that you're gonna do everything you can to prevent trash from leaking out of your dumpsters and you're going to the, and I, it's not a joking matter, I mean, it is a serious issue in this county and we've dealt with it for years and years and Republic has gotten better, but it's still a big problem. And if you don't believe it, you're not, you're not going up and down Highway 70. And Commissioner Jones, I think, saw a truck, I don't know whose truck it was going, that had already been emptied, but when they empty the vehicles out at the dump, all of the stuff doesn't come out of it and when they leave, they don't have the tarts on it and therefore you do get leakage. And I, I just hope that you'll understand that this board and certainly the City of New Bern takes this very seriously. We appreciate if you would make a commitment.
And we do and we see, we see the emails and we make a conscious effort to make sure everyone understands that as far as our drivers and employees are concerned. I know Rob does as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I got a couple of questions. And it may be the attorney since he's reviewed this. This contract stays in place as written right now with Republic that moves over to Waste Industries. Everything stays the same.
Yes, sir.
Now, my concern is, you had the opportunity to bid on this, and I understand business, understand business. You had the opportunity to bid on this a year ago.
And we did.
And you did, but you came in.
A little bit higher.
A little different than what contract it wanted. My concern is, I know we got four years left with one five-year options, but you can opt out and make up that difference of what we lost before. So I've got a concern, are you gonna come back and think, listen, we took you, and it's gonna be probably hard for you to say, but I wanna put it out there, you know, you didn't win the contract, but you've got the contract now because you bought it out because of business interest or whatever going on. You didn't think you can make money back then.
Well, you have to realize, we would have serviced out of Newport versus servicing out of New Bern. The synergies of the purchasing, having the two branches together and being able to relocate some of that business from down there up here and some of this business from up that's down there, down there, makes all this possible. Makes it so where we can make up.
I'm gonna be on this board, so.
I've been doing it for 27 years, you know where to find me, so I.
I know where you're at.
Yeah, they, they're gonna have to send me home hard when they send me home, so.
I got some real, real concerns.
No, 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 I understand exactly what you're saying and like I said, the, the location of the, of the facility here, right in James City, the contracts that we have that are in this county are gonna be easier to run out of James City for Craven County and the ones that, that Republic currently has in Carteret County are gonna be a lot easier for our Newport branch to run in Carteret County. And that's, that's the synergies of everything that makes it all work, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think that they're gonna drop their price wars.
Hey.
Just an observation, she says that she's gonna do much better.
Well, we are, but you know, but then again, we're having to worry about recycling. I think, I don't know if anybody's mentioned about the, the problem with China and not wanting to take any paper after and plastics after the first of the year and, and the trash and the recyclables, so we're gonna have to make a real, real effort and your contract, of course, that has nothing in it to compensate anybody for any of that, so. It's gonna be an education process, but we're gonna work it out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, we need a.
Can I, can I just have a moment while Norma and Rusty and Rob are here? We do have a bit of an issue that I was gonna mention in my manager's comment, but since they're here, they may, they may actually be able to add something. We're gonna have to start working toward our curbside recycling program and some of the items that are being placed in there that are actually not recyclable. Those materials end up at the sorting facility, then there's a fee for those to be disposed of. One of the things Rusty and Gene and I've been working on with our partners are a campaign. Trash bags are not good, pesticide containers are not good, things that are otherwise not recyclable cause the whole load to then become basically a landfill option. So while we think we're doing really good, a few bad apples in that mix can mess the whole thing up. So we're gonna have to push toward that because they're getting pushed back from the final destination. And I think as Norma commented, as they're tightening up on the recyclable commodity market, they're only gonna be looking at us a little bit harder. So take the opportunity tonight for the camera and the audience, but certainly, we'll be, Rusty, I think you've got a flyer with Norma that you're gonna start working with and we're gonna have some informational things that'll be stuck onto the recyclable container, as we find that it's not a recyclable material, we'll go ahead and let them know. So you may get some calls when we're not taking some stuff out.
We're gonna start tagging things and we're not gonna try to be the, you know, the, cycle police, but you know, we're gonna try to get people, you know, if there's something bad, we'll put it in the container and put a tag on it. But it's gonna be an educational person, a program. City of New Bern is gonna help us to, no, it's not their contract, but they do get calls. City of Havelock as well, they've agreed to do things at the Chili Festival for us and so it's a process, but we're gonna work it all out, so. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that they provide information about things that cannot go in.
And that's what we're gonna be doing, that's the, we've discovered that's the easiest thing is to say what's not in it. As a matter of fact, I'm getting some banners made. I know you're having, on the tents, you're having an open house and I was gonna get with Maylene, I know she's allowing us to bring a, a trash can, maybe to have a recycle bin there and I'm getting some banner made, banners made and some materials to hand out as well if they would agree to it.
Okay, it might be a bad idea to visit each one of the communities on your part and let them know it.
And the only, the only, the only good thing about the 18 gallon bins is that most communities have converted over to the 95 gallon carts and when you have the automated trucks, you can't see what's going in there, but when our guys get out, they pick it up and look in it, they can see it and that helps a whole lot. So, but, but, but you're right, I've been, I've already been to New Bern and Havelock and of course the county. I have a whole lot of towns here in the area, so I'm trying to get to them all, I guess, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I think we had a motion and a second?
We did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Department of Economic Development, 50 dialers.
Good evening.
Hiding out on us, huh?
Say that?
Hiding out on us.
It's cooler in there. Feels good. Well, I have, first have to apologize, I think I skipped a quarter with the quarterly economic development update and because of that, I'll try to capture some of the really big highlights that have happened in the past six months, but I'm gonna try to stick to the past three. So following my normal format, product development, as most of you are aware, we've got a construction project happening out of our industrial park, the, the new roadway, the extension of executive parkway as well as building a new road, which I'll just put a thought in your head is we've got to eventually decide what to call that road out of our industrial park. And again, just as a reminder, these, both of these roads will be turned over to the state once they're complete, they've been designed to that standard and the state is already in the process of, of that conversation. So the project's going well, we've had a little bit of issue with the soil, as we can probably expect or guess, so a little modifications to the contract, but nothing of any real significance. Also, and right here at the front, Dennis, can you pull that up? As you remember, back in July, we joined the Southeast Partnership.
The Craven County.
Sorry, we joined the Southeast Partnership and one of the things that they're doing for all 16 of their counties is providing a, an aerial video of their industrial park or an industrial site of, if, if a county doesn't have a park. And this is the final draft, I will say it is draft, there's a few tweaks that need to be done before it's on production, but this is, this is that video.
The Craven County Industrial Park is a 500 acre park on US Highway 70 near New Bern, North Carolina. Situated just minutes from Greenville, Kinston and Jacksonville, the park is convenient to the port of Morehead City, Raleigh and Wilmington. All necessary utilities are in place, including dark fiber. The park has excellent transportation access. It straddles US 70, a four lane divided highway, and is just minutes from US 17, a north-south highway. In addition, the park is about an hour drive from two major interstates. A North Carolina Railroad Company main line that is operated by Norfolk Southern is adjacent to the park with designated railroad right of way entering the park. The park is also just 10 minutes from Coastal Carolina Regional Airport, which has a 6,400 foot runway and provides multiple daily commercial flights to Atlanta and Charlotte, North Carolina. Water and sewer service is provided by the City of New Bern. Electric services are provided by Duke Energy Progress. And the park has multiple telecommunications providers, including Craven County that has dark fiber for lease. Natural gas is available at the park and is provided by Piedmont Natural Gas. The park has also been designated a foreign trade zone number 214 magnet site. The well-established Craven County Industrial Park is home to a variety of employers, including BSH Home Appliances, Moen, Craven Wood Energy, Wheatstone, Chatsworth Products and Carolina Technical Plastics. Both BSH Home Appliances and Moen have recently completed major expansions. Craven County is situated in the heart of eastern North Carolina and is home to Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point, Tryon Palace, North Carolina's first permanent state capital and the confluence of the Trent and Neuse Rivers. Craven County is an ideal location for business, industry, recreation, leisure and living. The county is geographically situated in close proximity to strategic metropolitan areas, 96 miles north of Wilmington, North Carolina, 113 miles southeast of Raleigh, North Carolina and 164 miles south of Norfolk, Virginia. Craven County truly offers something for everyone. Come explore the history, the culture and the distinct flavor that is unique to eastern North Carolina. Contact us today for more information on how to make Craven County Industrial Park your next location.
So again, that came at no cost to us, other than being members to the Southeast Partnership. Just a couple of points, the, the way that gentleman who is the voiceover said New Bern, that's gonna be corrected. And then also a couple of things about some of the lines that were drawn and the timing. But for the most part, it's finished and, and we'll be using that, I'll be using that as often as I can. And as you can imagine, in today's video intensive world, it's a good way to communicate who we are and the kind of property we have available for development, so I'm pretty excited about that. Also under product development, Commissioner Tyson and the C1A and with help of Jack and many others actually, we're still having a conversation about whether a spec building is the right thing for us to, to do here in, in industrial park, obviously with the, with the lead of the C1A. We've got a long list of things on new business recruitment, which is, which is exciting. Later this month, I'll be taking two trips for recruitment purposes to try to get our name out and using things like the video and our aerospace corridor to advertise ourselves and to talk directly with businesses that might be interested in expanding and to try to convince them to take a long look at Craven County. One of the events that I'll be attending is the National Business Aviation Association, Business Aviation Convention and Exhibition. And again, have an opportunity to work with the Southeast Partnership to illuminate, if you will, the aerospace. you will, the aerospace corridor. We've got a logo finished up. This is the, the new logo for the aerospace corridor, the North Carolina Aerospace Corridor. And we'll be using that. We are putting together final touches on marketing materials specifically associated with that aerospace corridor and we'll be talking that up when I take those recruitment trips as well. As I like to always note, I've had 20 site selection requests since my last update, which in six months, that's, that's not too many, but they've been of higher quality, I think. And again, we're, we're making strides to be able to be more responsive to specific requests. Also, you recall last, well, earlier this year, we released the Craven County Magazine. It was met with all kinds of excitement. I think everyone that's looked at it feels it was a very good piece, did a very good job of showing who we are as a county and what assets we have. The, the next edition, the 2018 edition is now under ad sales as well as development of, of the content, so that'll be, again, released at the, about the same time next year, in January, February 2018. Just a few updates around specific requests. I am hearing now from companies that are interested in locating here because of Cherry Point, specifically the F-35, talking with two in the past month that have interest in locating here. Also had a chance to go to Winston-Salem, to the Southeast Region Aerospace Supplier and Advanced Manufacturing Summit. This is an annual event that the North Carolina Military Business Center holds, made some good contacts with, with companies there. And the real point there is to, to continue to generate this, this aerospace idea that truly Craven County can be a, a good location for an aerospace company. And then lastly, just want to touch on one thing. I actually have had a couple of calls to the office about this. It's been in the news, the, the Amazon HQ2, our headquarters, the second headquarters for Amazon. North Carolina is in the running of that, but I can unequivocally say that Craven County is not. And if you'd like to know why, I'll tell you. But this is a massive project for a very large amount of physical space as well as a large amount of land with a lot of attributes that we simply don't have because we're not that size county. So just wanted to be clear that we're, we're not in the running for that. Wish we were in some ways, but in other ways, it, it's going to be a massive incentive involved with that as well. Onto business retention and expansion. Many of you were at the event back in July with BSH Home Appliances, their 100,000 square foot addition to their dishwasher factory is moving along very nicely. And I just got an email today from them wanting to schedule, schedule a time for ribbon cutting for their new distribution center expansion that they did earlier this year. So that'll be coming up. But again, BSH is, is going strong. And I mentioned also, there's a local company that's currently here in Havelock that because of the F-35 and the, and the traction that that's gaining, the lift fan facility becoming a reality, all those sorts of things, is now talking about expansion as well. So just pointing that out to show that we are starting to see some traction with the growth of the F-35 at Cherry Point. A few of you were at the, the Omarx Entrepreneur Center a couple of weeks ago. I'm very happy to say that the Entrepreneur Center is open and doing very well. We've actually signed up members to take all of our office space and most of our desks. We have about 15 members right now and we have additional members that have taken some office space. We're not, we're not truly renting offices because we don't want to get into a lease situation, but we're providing office space to members that want to have that higher level membership. And so far, we're doing very well. And again, Commissioner Dacey, thank you for taking the time to, to come and speak and the others that were there, thank you for, for attending. It's, it's a huge relief, but it's also pretty exciting to see that the interest that we're getting now that we're a reality. And then also, just as a, a reminder, last spring, we did a class called YBO or WEBO, depending on who you are, pronounce it that way, it's Workshop in Business Opportunities. And this was a program that was awarded through, or funded through a grant that was awarded to the Entrepreneur Center. And essentially, it's a 16 week intensive course for folks who want to be business people and entrepreneurs. And the second class is now underway, it's actually being held at the Entrepreneur Center in the Omarx Building. And we're, again, getting a really good response on that. And then lastly, under Training and Workforce Development, working closely with Craven Community College on getting a $250,000 grant from the Duke Foundation to establish an apprenticeship program here in the county. You've probably heard me say that before, but apprenticeships are one of the leading indicators of success when it comes to bringing new people on in a manufacturing situation. And we want to expand what we have here existing right now with BSH in the county and do more for more of our, more of our companies. And then lastly, February 2018, we will, we will combine with Craven County Schools, Craven Community College and Industry to have CTE Month. This is something that the county schools have done in the past, but we're going to try to elevate that. CTE stands for Career and Technical Education and it's the, all the different courses that kids can take within the county schools that give them some sort of path toward a trade or, or a certificate or something in, in a more trade oriented field. As you know, that's a very strong part of our economy, that's a very strong or very large part of our workforce. So more, the more that we can do with that, the better off we'll be. So we'll be having things like visits to our industry leaders, we'll have a CTE fair at the convention center and we'll have a variety of things associated with that to, again, try to elevate the, the understanding of the jobs that are here in this county and how we can do more to get our students, both in high school and even middle school and then in community college, to be ready for those jobs. So I think I've covered everything pretty quickly there, but happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Timothy, you've mentioned the spec building issue. And I just would like, if at all possible, to kind of get an understanding as to what businesses we've failed to be able to capture to come here because we don't have the building particular size or location that might be necessary. And I really want to understand that before we're challenged with this question.
Sure. I, I can provide you with a spreadsheet. I've tracked every single request that I've received since I've been here in this office and, and essentially logged what type of request it was and the size specifications, all those sorts of things. And you can see pretty clearly that way, so I'll, I'll distribute that to you.
And I guess, if you could also maybe demonstrate some efforts that have been made to try to get private industry to build these buildings in the community?
Yes.
And why it is that they're failing to do so?
Yes, I can do that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would like to thank the Economic Development Director for, I had asked him to speak to a bunch of naval officers and my feedback from them was excellent.
Thank you.
They really enjoyed it and I think you'll get some referrals from some.
It was a nice evening, I appreciate that.
Good.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Water Department, Rusty Hayes, Certified Bid Tabulation.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, we budgeted this year to extend our water line down to the end of Goose Creek Road and to go down a private road to serve probably 10 or 12 houses possibly. We bid, opened bids, sealed bids on September 14th, 2007. We had three bidders come in on that and T-LAN was the low bid at $76,997.50. Our engineer that helped us with the bid opening and the bid documents has certified this and recommends that we approve T-LAN and offer them a contract.
Okay. I have a motion. Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Where is this company located? Where are they at?
We're local. I know one of the partners is from Bamaco County, he's been in the business for quite a few years. I don't know the other partner, but he has an office in James City.
Yes, Commissioner Lyon. Rusty, what's the tap-in fees going to be for these folks?
We charge $560 each.
$560 each?
Well, 500 actually, deposit and a service call.
And that's for each one of them? Have they, have they all agreed to come aboard?
Not all of them, no, sir.
How many of them?
That's a good question. I mean, a lot of people say they're interested, but whether or not they're going to go on, I do not know. Eventually they will.
I do have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Rusty, how many, of all the streets that are not serviced by a municipality or other type of private company that provides the order, how many roads are we lacking? I mean, have we covered most of them?
I, I don't know.
Pretty much all of them.
Any that were lacking? No, sir. I think we pretty much got it. I'd be lying to be a proposal 100%, but I'm not aware of any.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, forgive me for having to ask this, but can you just kind of walk me through the economics of this? So we're spending $76,000 to make water available?
Yes.
To a road that's got how many homes on it?
About 10 maybe?
10. And we're charging them $500 each to get on?
To sign up, right.
Okay, so that's $5,000. So where does the other $71,000 come from?
Comes in fees. We have a $15 fee. We've done this over the years and, and always had a priority list and it was always based on how many homes, potential homes would sign up for it. And they didn't always do that, we would do like 80% of the sign up and it would be a payback in years. And some of the lines that we put in, you know, had a payback of 400 years, you know? You know, if you don't have it out there, people aren't going to build and they're not going to have the opportunity to get water.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, if I may, I'll answer you on that. In the western end of the county, we have had many roads like this that were not accessible to county water. And once the commissioners, this board, through many years, when it started back in the 80s, we started a water system to date, the investment's been made and it's been made for enormous amounts of money like this. But as Rusty said, the potential to see new customers, new building that will come to those areas. You, I've seen roads where there might not have been but four residents on, once they had the opportunity to have county water. Once, most of the time what follows is these roads will become, be paved, that four may turn into 14 residents, you know? And, and I think it goes back to, you know, providing every citizen in the county an opportunity to have county water. Because a lot of these wells have been there for years and some of them are running dry. And, and I think it's a, it's been an investment of money that's came back that we've generated, it's not necessarily been borrowed, it's, it's money that's been generated through the fund and that's been returned back to the customer. So, in my opinion, it's been a great asset to a lot of the rural areas in this county.
Commissioner Jones, I, I do appreciate that and, and my, my comments are not in all, in any way to disparage the program at all, it's just that I believe that it's important that we understand this program and that this is going to be essentially a 40-year return on our investment, which is fine, I mean, if that's what we're comfortable with, but, but I wanted, I thought we should just run through the numbers, we don't get an opportunity to see you that often and, and we don't have the opportunity to do this that, that, that much any longer because as you said, we're, it's an awfully mature program that we've got. But nonetheless, it is.
And I miss you all.
Pardon?
And I miss you all.
We bet.
So, it's, but it is, it is what it is and that's about a 40-year return on that, on that, on this particular investment.
Well, you know, of course, as they use more water, you know, we'll give some of that back a little bit quicker.
Okay, good enough. Bring it down to 36.
All right.
Thank you.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Against? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are appointments, current, pending and upcoming. Appointments be effective immediately, otherwise specified. Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. We had two members come back, I believe I'm having a third member come back. Linda Shagnon will be coming back. So that brings that back up, I believe, to six members now or seven members?
I, I'm not sure it's that many.
You're not sure it's that many?
No.
I think there are two, two members on there already that had stayed. It's either five or six, but we need some more members. Okay. Havelock Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, I've had meetings this past week with two people, they're going to get back with me, so I'll have something, hopefully, yea or nay, but we're still, we're still searching.
Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Term expiring Jan Hood, Tony Lee, not assigned. Do we have anything on that?
We have not heard yet.
Okay. New Bern Planning and Zoning Board. Now, have you heard from them?
No, I have not, but I have let them know that you have not been successful yet, but they said they will hold off if you all would like to extend your time.
I'm sorry, maybe it was just me that was, but they, they emailed a day and said if you would request more time, they'd happily grant that.
Oh, well, I think we should request more time and if you, unfortunately, because we thought we weren't going to have an appointment on that board, I got rid of the list I had. So if you could give me a new list, I will phone that list.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I think Rocky Run is included in that ETJ.
Yeah, I think it is.
There is a gentleman that has shown a little interest. If you don't have anybody, I can reach out to him.
Well, I have nobody right now.
All right, well, if, if it's all right, would you all reach out to him?
I certainly would.
Thank you.
Request the extension and we're going to find somebody.
Okay. Craven 100 Alliance Board Directors.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate you on board. Wood. Is that correct? Am I saying that right, County Manager?
Wood.
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 She is a plant manager out at Moen. She's very familiar with the operations of Moen, one of the largest employers in the, in the county, and I think she'd be a great asset for that board.
Do you have the applications?
Yeah, yeah.
I know I have one, but I don't think the other commissioners got one.
I did have one.
All right, we have appointed by acclamation, appointed.
I like George was kept in the dark on that specific application. I'm not going to hold anybody, you know?
Craven County Clean Sweep Committee. We have two members there due to expire. Both of those will re, re-enlist. Spoke to both of them. And that ends that. Upcoming appointments for November, we have the Fireman's Relief Fund, EMS Advisory Council, the Health Board, Havelock Library, New Bern Library, Vanceboro Library, Coastal Carolina Airport and commission, for the commissioners' appointments. Next, Attorney's Report.
Just one matter tonight. We have an initial offer to purchase property owned by the city and the county at 214 Lawson Street. The offer is an amount of $1,125. You'll see from the information what the total taxes will do at the time of foreclosure and the current tax value of $4,500. Documents that we normally present to you are included in your file. Normally at this point, we would provide you a, a percentage or proportion of how much we believe the purchase possibly be split between the county and the city, but we did not have that baseline data to have that information for you at this meeting, but we'll have it to you at the next meeting. So as my understanding is, the city of New Bern has already approved this to move forward and so again, if the commissioners accept it, it goes out to the paper for upset bids.
Okay. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes, the ayes have it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
County Manager.
Good evening, Board. How are you doing tonight? I've got a few items for you, a couple of things for your calendar. Wanted to remind you that on October 16th, which is your next regularly scheduled meeting, we'll be having our ribbon cutting for the new water plant on Lewis Farm Road. That will occur at approximately 11:00 AM. That's contingent on how long this meeting takes, but normally we're done by about 10:15 or 10:30, so look forward to that. Public's of course welcome to come if they'd like and attend that. Also next week, on Tuesday, October 10th, we'll be having our Connect with Craven event. Dennis, you got me? Gene, if you wouldn't mind, I'll tell you a couple of new things. And I guess to get to, to the Connect with Craven, I wanted to unveil our new county website. I've mentioned to you for about the last nine months, we've been working on a new, more modern website. modern website platform. This is a product that a lot of counties and cities use across the country. It has a couple of features that I like. It has five buttons in the middle. These are sort of your most viewed areas of the website. We have our employment, which is county employment opportunities that notify me. These are citizens alerts. There's, try to click on it, Dennis. I hope this takes a lot of weeks for you to hear tonight. I'm not the most technologically advanced person in the world, but you can enter your email address there and then you would select from the different areas that you want to receive notifications on. So, for instance, you're interested in weather alerts from Mr. Kite, you would click that widget and then also, I believe that's a text, Dennis, an email and a text that we'll send you. And there's various county bids if you're a contractor that, you know, is interested in county work. If you're interested in our Connect with Craven event, you can have a notice here on that. Sheriff's Department. And then, we also have calendar updates, but we can sync with your calendar, whether it's on your computer or your tablet or your phone. So if you're interested in, for instance, Board of Commissioner meetings, then we could sync that with your phone number. So that's one of the neat features there. I'm not going to go through everything, but we have a Connect Us. This is a county directory of any county official. We'll just go to Commissioners here. And then it has your phone number and it also has your email address. The public can get to you right from there. And that's for every county department. And we've got maps. This is our typical way to kickstart the GIS department that we have, the new mainframe we'll get there. And also, new online deal page. So if you have, as we transition into our Tyler product, this opportunities will grow. For us now, we have property tax, vehicle tax, water bill, and you can do that either by telephone or online and then the portals and the fees and such are there for you. And we've got a neat calendar here, so we are going to start placing more county events as the departments begin to place things on here. As you can see, tonight's meeting, October 2nd, we have a Board of County Commissioners meeting. We've got the big sweep coming up on Saturday, October 7th, which we're excited about, and of course, Columbus Day, which is a county holiday, but we're not going to do it anyway here. We have a new section. This was the old what's new on our old website. It was kind of hidden in one of the taskbars. We're going to, we're going to kind of highlight several events. As you'll see, we have early voting going on now downstairs. We'll see New Bern elections, our Connect with Craven event, and then, of course, sort of our banner, the trash ticker change over on July 1st. And then, a couple of things, we're going to spotlight on a couple of events. As you know, this month, we have Mum Fest, which is a large event here in New Bern. And one that we're proud of and one that spotlights our military involvement in our new Think a Vet program over the Registered Deeds Department, which is becoming a line of New Bern. We have some quick links here, you know, different department pages, boards, emergency notifications, sign up and media releases. And then finally, at the top, our traditional, you know, how do you do different things within the government? This is the minutes, Boards of Commissions, County ordinances, Connect with Craven, our departments. This links you to any county department and it's fairly self-explanatory, the different things you can do there. Services, all the things that we offer, community, our partners. And finally, my favorite part, this is the how do I? Questions we get on the phone. How do I get a building permit? How do I get a first gen? Our favorite one in our county, we get probably more concealed carry permit. How do I get a, how do I get a gun permit? So we're going to provide that. So, I would encourage you to visit, explore, tell us things you like, tell us things you like to see improved. Certainly a work in progress, but I want to thank Dennis Holt and his staff who've worked very hard over the last year getting this implemented and I think he did a great job. Very much my honor. As I mentioned, Connect with Craven, October 10th. We'll be down at the Convention Center starting at 4:00 p.m. It'll last till 7:30. We'll have all our county departments there. They'll have booths. We'll have various equipment out front. We're going to have our partner agencies there as well. We want the public to understand what county government is and what we do every day and what services we have available. Certainly, you get a snapshot twice a month here in this meeting. This will be a more in-depth dive into that. We do have a neat section in the two upstairs rooms. There'll be various, we're calling them sort of mini seminars, where if the clerk of court, the Registered Deeds, myself, our GIS ministry will be doing kind of how-to seminars on different county programs that we have. Let's see. All right. On September 22nd, I wanted to mention, we did have our opioid forum, which was sponsored by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and led by our chairman. I know there's going to be comments because all the commissioners attended, but I thought it was a very nice event and well-attended and I want to thank the county staff, particularly our Convention Center staff, who worked really hard to make that happen. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I noted that there were several items that we've kind of been carrying over each month. Do you think, and is the board willing to maybe schedule another work session upcoming? I know there's various subjects we could talk about, certainly the tethering ordinance one, some of those changes in discussion. I know you've got various committees meeting on different things. Probably got some things we need to talk about with the sheriff and opioid issues there. You wanting to schedule something sooner or later or?
I think a little bit later. We have other stuff that we're working on.
Okay.
What, what would you suggest was a good one?
Well, we traditionally meet after our day meeting, which would be October 16th. The wrinkle there would be with the water plant ribbon cutting. We could certainly go out of sequence and just have a regular work session on the, you know, the next Monday after that, which I didn't bring my calendar here with me, but I believe that would be the...
23rd.
23rd. We can push it further than that. We can go...
Commissioner Lina won't be here.
We can go to the 30th.
And I, I don't believe I'm going to be here either, so...
Okay. Well, Monday's, I mean, it doesn't have to be Monday, it could be Friday, any day.
Let me see, I'm going to be here Monday. Yeah, I'm going to be gone from the 25th.
I'll tell you what, why don't, do you want me just to bring some dates back for the 16th and try to schedule past that? Since we're obviously not going to do it that day, we can just do it then.
Good idea.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, unless the board has things for me.
Okay. I have something, Mr. Chairman. Where are we on the tethering ordinance? When you extract to bring that back? I'm going to discuss that.
It's really at the board's discretion now if you'd like staff to try to take a look at what's been presented and...
We could, I was going to also, we have a committee already for the ordinance and I was going to meet with that committee and go over the new additions that have to be, that are being asked to be put in there. And if everybody approves of it, we also are holding off for some other reasons, so...
Yes, sir. We had a, there was a staff level question about animal cruelty investigator, which we talked about. I have been working with the sheriff. I believe I have a resolution, so the ball would kind of be coming back to your court on that position.
It could, it might be a good idea to hold everything off and do everything together, but I think that would be for the committee to decide. And that was Commissioner McCabe and Commissioner Jones and myself were on that committee. I don't know if that answers your question.
Sure. So we need to get that committee back together, okay? All right, thank you.
Next is Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Tyson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to briefly talk about the James City roadway improvements. We call them James City, but this project has grown to go all the way out to Thurman Road and perhaps beyond. But, met with our DOT representative, General Hume Overholt, and some others from...
Mike Fox, the chairman?
Yeah, uh-huh. And it was very interesting. Now, actually, we're further along the process than I, than I thought that we were, but in the, in the design, it had changed a little bit from the design we understood before, but it looks like they're going to have five of those flyovers. Is that right?
That's correct.
Chairman, in the James City, starting at the first road, which we've named, I can't remember right now.
Elder.
Elder, yeah. Elder, Williams, Airport, Tabarna.
Tabarna and then...
And Carolina College.
You got Grantham Road as well.
Grantham. So it's actually six. Yeah, there was five before.
That's right, it was five before and the...
Elder, Elder Street has kind of come along in there, which will do a good job of connecting parts of James City that had been cut in half two or three times over the years. And also, there's going to be a six-lane road, I believe, Mr. Chairman.
To a certain point.
Yeah, up through, correctly, Tabarna, yeah, and then it'll converge back into four lanes, but allow that congestion to kind of, to move along faster than where you have so much congestion right now around Williams Road and Airport. But, this project's moved along faster than I would have ever thought. It is going to be a painful process during the, during the construction. It's going to, the traffic will get worse before it gets better. The die is cast and it's going to happen.
But the light at the end of the tunnel is going to be great.
It's going to be painful for a few years. Also, I'd like to talk about the federal deficit as well, Mr. Chairman. Some citizens had mentioned that before, it's over $23 billion right now, which is a travesty in my opinion. We spend about $250 billion a year just paying interest on the debt. I may not be around, but my children, my grandchildren will have to pay a severe price. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several things to bring before the board and our citizens tonight. Had the opportunity to attend a community watch meeting in Cove City that our Sheriff's Department participated in and also ALE. I thought it was a very informative meeting. Cove City is considering implementing a community watch and I think it initiated somewhat from the meeting that we had with your meeting in Cove City. And so, I commend those folks that came out and gave an informative presentation. Also, we had Fireman's Day in Cove City this past Saturday. It was a great day, great attendance, some good old barbecue. They did a good job. This coming Saturday, Dover has its Fireman's Day, and so I invite anyone to come up to Dover. They will be selling barbecue pork and chicken plates and begin at 11:00 a.m. And also, Mr. Chairman, while I was at Cove City this past Saturday, I had some folks come up to me with our EMS and shared with me that there is some folks that are trying at the present time to see if they could get the Highway Patrol helicopter reinstated in Kentstown. I think it was for many years. Now, in Raleigh, it's not in Kentstown no longer. With the loss of Pedro at Cherry Point, when we need that helicopter here in eastern North Carolina, Commissioner Day, see, it takes an hour plus, maybe even two, to get assistance from it. I know when we had the shooting in Cove City, looking for the suspect, we waited several hours, you know, for him to be able to get there. I'd like to ask if you would allow, Mr. Chairman, for our staff to look into, you know, if possibility of, of what the progress is on that and if there's anything that we might be able to do as a board to ask whoever that they might consider the reinstatement. We need that helicopter here in eastern North Carolina.
I think the county manager has copied that.
Yeah, can I make a comment on it, sir? We were certainly hopeful that something would happen in the last state budget. It was talked about, there was a lot of discussion, there were some good folks behind it. Unfortunately, it didn't make it and that was a little disappointing to all of us in the east. I would recommend that we continue to make it loud, you know, to bring the issue forward, but we also possibly think about a resolution. All right, I don't know if the timing would be more appropriate, maybe as they begin to go back for the short session, or you want to go and do it now and reaffirm it later on, but I do think it's very important. Mr. Kite just reached out, just folks in Raleigh, he copied me on that email and certainly something he's thinking about too, so...
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Lina.
Sir, a couple of things to bring up here. Everybody remember, pass the word, on the 12th of October, salute to women vets in Havelock at the Convention Center, Tourism Event Center at 11 o'clock. Tables and tickets are still on sale if you're interested in attending. If you haven't seen the Think a Vet over in the...
Registered Deeds.
Registered Deeds. You need to check that out if you're a vet. It's a good thing, you need to get your information and get it put in there and such. They're charging, not charging vets to do it. It's a great thing to go forward with it. I want to bring up something. I want to make sure the public is aware. I don't believe it was the intent of the individual that was speaking tonight to say we did anything wrong or doing anything wrong on this public hearing for 5311 for the Community Transportation Grant. That application is a federal application. It's done by the federal government. It's a standard contract. It's a standard procedure that they use. Every contract at Cherry Point has that information in it and it's provided. We didn't do anything wrong. We're following the guidance and the regulations. It may not be thought of as being needed. I understand that, but this board did nothing wrong by accepting it, nor did the director do anything wrong by filling it out. She filled it out as directed by the federal government in standard practice by law. It has to be done that way. Comment was made on an individual increasing the debt ceiling. Debt ceiling is gone way out. We sent billions and billions of dollars out of this country to help people and we don't even help ourselves. We, both sides of the aisle, had better come together and start talking because this country is going down. We have our own party and I'll speak for my party. We can't even agree on something that we had for seven and a half years that we were going to take care of. We can't get 50 people to agree that we said we were going to fight for seven and a half years. So it's not just one-sided. One person does not make the trillions of dollars in debt. It takes the whole party or both parties to move it forward. We, as a group of people, have the authority to put them out if you don't like us. So use that option. But don't blame it on one individual or, it's a party-wise on both sides. We've had many years of this. There's only been one that I can think about and that's Reagan and Tip O'Neill, who crossed the aisles, who got things done. And if we don't go back to that, then we're going to be in the same shape that we're moving forward and it's going to get bigger and everybody is right and has made a statement. Are we putting the burden on somebody? Dang straight we are. And we've got to stop it, but we've got to start looking at ourselves and not outside this country. Do I want to bring everybody in? No, because there are people out there that needs help, but we better start thinking about ourselves and looking at it. And I'll get off my way.
Commissioner McCabe.
Got to go, Colonel. I already have a thing from the county about it. Would like to say that we, as citizens of Craven County, we did start putting ourselves together and start praying more because it's such a tragedy that happened in our country. Las Vegas, Florida, Puerto Rico, and we are blessed, but yet we still fight among ourselves and it's wrong. We need to start praying more for each other and it don't matter what part you're from, you're all going to go someday, but we need to work together and all make peace in this country. And all, everybody, well, not happening to us, not happening to us, you don't know that. No, it doesn't have to be a big gathering, it could be a small gathering. Even church is not safe no more. So we start, start praying more to each other and let's, let's sit together and let's ride out together. If that's all we can make it, is have a change of heart for everybody. And that's all I got to say. Take home with you.
Commissioner Sampson.
I'd like to talk about first, an entrepreneurial center that we had tried for, I know, at least six or seven years, a hit a seller set up, the people going to business for themselves. I found a long time ago, that you're going to have to give a hand up for people, some people who want to do something in this community or this county, this city. We worked hard to get that seller set up. This seller would help people who were not able, who wanted to go in business and were not able to afford the rent and the light bill and the water bill to go and business by themselves. Now, this entrepreneurial seller, where I see it, this is a hand up to people who don't have the money to go in business or can't borrow the money to go in business. And I thought this was a great idea, then some of the merchants and some of the citizens and even the county, we got together and worked on this situation to help those people who wanted to go in business and who had good business that were going to make money for the county agency there also, because they're going to bring in tax money and then they're going... going also to help the county and city to collect taxes off the money that they bring in. So, I thought this was a really good idea. Another thing that really bothered me a lot was when I saw, I've been seeing violence for a long time in this country, but when I just saw this place over in Puerto Rico, and how long those people have been without help, I always put myself in this predicament. How would I feel if I had my family around me, there's no help coming from my government? And it's been so long now, and people have died, I even heard news about people that was in the rest home, and this is, one of my biggest about people in the rest home don't get the attention that they should get, and all this love we got in our hearts for each other, and some of us can just sit still and do nothing. But I feel for these people, because I always put myself in that place. Suppose it were me, over in Puerto Rico, over in one of these storm areas who lost everything. I've been there one time before. Some people did come to help me, and I really appreciate it. And I always want to reach out as far as I can to help someone else. The Lord blessed me. He's been making me rich, but he did give me enough to kind of help where I live on. Struggling with debt, but still, I got to have some food on table for the family and have a place for them to live at. But I realize a whole lot of people don't have any place for people there. And right here in Craven County, the city of New Bern, we don't even have a place that a person that's outdoors can go and get a room. They have a few rooms out at the soup kitchen, a few rooms, and it'd be feel, most of the time, if you wait till 12:00 o'clock, you probably won't get in there. And I have been talking to the city and the county. It's not some way that we can come together and build a building, that people have a place, a shelter in these, in this realm. I tell you, sometime, I'll be laying home, and I see it pouring out rain, or see how cold it is outside, how hot it is outside, and I'm laying in a couple of, couple of homes, and sometime, the roof might be digging, but that's no bigger, because I can get that fixed in a short time. But all these people don't have anywhere to go. They're going under the bridge, they're going old parked cars. A lot of people feel good enough for them, they have a chance, and I can say some of them did. But I'm so glad the Lord don't treat me like that. I had a chance to do a lot of things I didn't do, and I feel, I feel for people that's lost out there, that have no place to go. If we had, if we had 50 rooms for the county and city, that would be a help, and maybe, maybe somebody else would come in and help us do a little better. And everybody say, well, spending too much money, a lot of people ain't spending too much money to try to help somebody who don't want none. I'm not a fucking, I'm not, I'm not Jesus. I can't tell when people need or when they don't need. He's the only one who can read people's mind. I can't read their mind, but I do all I can. I get upset with some people myself, and I feel like they can do better than they do, but that's not my call. All I have to do is do something to help somebody along the way, and if those people get help, God bless. One more thing I would like to talk about is the water plant. We have a water plant coming online pretty soon, and I know it's taken us at least 15 years, maybe more, to go through the procedure in getting this water plant. And we had a lot of people work hard on it. Our last county manager came in, he's been working really hard trying to get this plant up. We had a lot of obstacles in a way. A lot of people would say it couldn't be done, but it took us, I know, at least 10 years, and I counted it up, and probably more than that. But we'll be having this water plant come online. I think this was one of the best decisions we ever made, because water is a luxury. Water's the more, well, actually, water's the most precious jewel that human beings have. You can't live a long time without water. Okay, I make money, you guys. You can't buy no water, you're going to be gone in a few months. So, I'm just so glad that we decided to work on these projects, that we can have something to offer the people in the future, that will be able to help our generation that's coming forward. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I woke up, I think it was this morning, and took a look at that newspaper and noticed Ms. Sampson on the back deck. I want to congratulate you. Wonderful picture. It's nice and bright and beautiful smile. I just want to thank the Board for acting as we did at the last meeting to make $5,000 available for Narcan packets. In the discussions that I've had with people since, since we've taken our action, and at the opioid conference last week, it was very warmly received. I think the sheriff was very happy that we, that we went ahead and made the moves that we needed to make in order to do what we can to help protect the people in our community. And I just want to thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, that's all. Thank you.
As far as the resolution, I'm appointing a committee, and I spoke to Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Lainer, and Commissioner Dacey to do due diligence as far as this resolution is concerned, and report back to the Board. And the other committee, we already appointed. I, too, was on that trip from James City, and we took a number of people on that, at the state, the Chairman of the Transportation Board, and the Chief of Operations. But the best part of all that is that it looks like they're going to start work sometime in the latter part of 2019, and hopefully, by the year 2023, it should be completed. But as I said before, I think that all that inconvenience is going to be worth it at the end. In addition to that, I attended a recovery celebration at the park over here, and they had a pretty big crowd, and the Mayor was there, the District Attorney was there, and I was there, so representing the county. That's about it. I think...
Move the journal.
Yeah. Good, good, good thought. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming.
Stevie?